I see that we have some minutes for clarification.
Yes, Chair, my motion will be to approve the minutes of the forty-sixth meeting as previously circulated second.
I moved in second to approve the forty-six minutes of the forty-sixth meeting. I also vote I motion is carried, minutes are approved. Moving into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one, application number two-two dash two-three-five-seven-eight from the Shamrock Restaurant Group LLC, DBA The Black Shamrock Tavern. Mr. Zibakala.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission, Manuel Zibakala here on behalf of the Shamrock Group LLC, DBA The Black Shamrock Tavern. To my right is John Never, the owner of the establishment. We think, we think it was time to review the supplemental licensing investigative report submitted on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. With the Commission's permission, I would like to distribute some documents for review, if that's okay.
Thank you. Many to give us some time to review them.
We reviewed the investigative report and what I'll do is I'll just walk through this, understanding that the Commission hasn't had the time to review the documents in entirety. After reviewing the statutory requirements section of the investigative report, we did a review of the registered voters' list. It did turn out that there were the mix of us mixed up on the affidavit. However, after review of the total numbers, based off the information that we had using the voter registration database provided by the city county of Honolulu, our FBI from the Honolulu Laker Commission, and then, of course, the owners' amnesty data. We went through and juxtaposed the specific mailings to the individual registered voters at the individual addresses. The totals we got were different than the investigative, the investigators. As such, when we did the percentages, it did meet statutory requirements. However, we understand that the Commission takes the mail-out very seriously. I would like to note a few items specifically regarding the mail-out. And it has to do specifically with this application, but more so as an overall review of this mailing process. It's interesting when you review both DPP, the city county of Honolulu records, as well as the state election records. There are many different items that don't connect. If I may pass out one more document to the group.
Of course.
So unfortunately, I have one copy of these, if you could pass them around. Those are specific team contains in which the company and property has different street addresses in the city county offices. It's not always a specific individual, sometimes it's multiple individuals. That being said, what we did find out after a review of individuals that received their mail-outs, and this is my last document that I'll be classing around. Is this is a signed document from an individual who received the notice. The individual was mailed using our mailing list address. It was counted as a no based off of the investigator's review of the documents. But as you can see by the signed letter, he did receive it based off of the address that we had on our current voters' mailing list. That being said, it creates a little bit of a discrepancy based off of did the individual with registered voter receive their mailer? If they were mailed to based off the mailing list? If they're mailed to based off the TPP records, which the Commission before has stated that they use to review the mailing documents? And as such, how can we verify numbers using three different sources of addresses? Because if one address was mailed to and they still received it, but it wasn't as dictated on a different list? Does that count as not being mailed to? Does that count as being received? It's unclear at this point. That being said, we entirely understand the Commission's position of wanting to make sure that everybody is notified of this. So far, we've done two mail-outs. We have mailed out to a large number of individuals, over a thousand. And we've received no protests, no letters of concern. We've only received letters of support. That being said, based off the numbers submitted, we reached a sixty-six percent for the five-hundred-foot and the one-hundred percent for the one-hundred-foot. But unfortunately, I don't have investigator to get his numbers to verify.
You said that there was a discrepancy in the numbers.
Correct.
How much of a discrepancy are we talking about?
So his list, though, when he pointed out total voters, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight within five-hundred feet. I have here is four-hundred-and-four. And then within one-hundred feet is two, and what I have here is one.
And two-hundred feet is two registered voters and one registered voter?
Ours is one and investigator together is two.
Okay.
So that being said, I entirely understand the Commission's position, and this is a very difficult fact. We obviously would like to move forward securing a license. That being said, if there is a middle ground that will satisfy the Commission, we entirely understand as well. And if we would be able to discuss either before or after, if you do decide to go into executive session, what that may, what that possibility may be, we are open to those opportunities.
If I do that, Mr. Arra, do you have anything to add?
Um, as I've said, in different circumstances in the past, with respect to statutory requirements, the Commission does not have the authority to waive any of those requirements, but they may permissibly interpret those requirements within reason. In an instance like this, I would think that at a minimum investigator, talkator should have the opportunity to look at the documents and information that Mr. Zibakala submitted and have the opportunity to either respond and/or reaffirm his own findings. So I would think, you know, although no one wants to drag this out longer, I don't know if you would need more than one week to do so or two weeks, but... Okay, I'm getting the signal that you will need two weeks to do so. But I would think at a minimum, he would need the opportunity to look at what was submitted and respond. I'm hoping that in those two weeks, in addition to confirming or affirming the information that's been submitted for your review, that perhaps we can, since we'll be offline, we can discuss with the applicant and the investigator some possible salute solutions. And I'm speaking in terms of those, the interpretation ability that you have and that we could possibly propose.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No, Mr. Zibakala, are you okay with the two-week continuance for the purposes that Mr. Arra has stated?
Sorry, if I may just check my calendar.
August, it'd be August twenty-five.
Okay, um, I think if the opportunity for next week isn't available, two weeks are necessary. The one thing I would like to state is our second best or second temporary is coming to a close in the beginning of September. So if we do move forward after this, I would hope that the Commission would be willing to work together to see how we can, you know, extend that if necessary.
Sure, I mean, at least my inclination would be to extend that during this process because there seems to be ambiguity. And at least a discrepancy in terms of numbers and so forth. And I might have said this before, but you guys are acting in good faith, but it is up to us to interpret the statute within reason as Ms. Arra has stated. For the record, we will also provide all the documents you gave us to the administrations as part of the record. And I think it is two weeks, maybe, but I don't know what else our investigator has on his plate.
Yeah, and I will also say, um, thank you for doing all of this work. This is a lot of work, it's very tedious work, and I thank you for taking it seriously. And for your patience in also us working through this process. Because as you know, within the past few years, Hawaii has passed safety voter registration. So that has kind of thrown off some of these voter registration lists and people's addresses. People moving away, people moving back, especially during the pandemic. So we, you know, we just need to work through the process, you know, and making sure that everyone has the opportunity and has received notice that needs to receive notice. So can I, we get a, we need a motion for a two-week continuance?
Before we do the Mr. Arra, do you need to put anything else on the record?
Um, I'll just go ahead and just very briefly put something in on the record with respect to the history of this application. The first public hearing on this matter was scheduled for the June ninth meeting, which was canceled to permit the applicant to republish notice and redo the mail-out. The continued date was the August fourth meeting, at which time the second supplemental report was provided to the Commission, indicating that the investigator felt that there was non-compliance with the statute. So therefore, the further continuance would need to be to a date certain, which would be August twenty-fifth. Public hearing kept open, and I think that's all I need to say.
I'll make a motion to continue agenda item one, application number twenty-two dash two-three-five-seven-eight for two weeks with the public hearing kept open.
Seconded to continue, agenda item number one to August twenty-fifth, public hearing kept open. I also vote I motion is carried, we'll see you folks in two weeks. Thank you for your patience. Moving into special license applications, calling agenda item number two, applications number two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-eight-nine-dash-zero-one through two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-eight-nine-dash-zero-three inclusive from Kids Fit Foundation. Hi, good afternoon. Mr. Murphy online?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Sean McGuire.
I'm Peter Murphy.
We need this to continue from previous hearing, correct?
Yes.
And has been provided copies of the, I guess, the website screenshot that you provided earlier.
And we also received them via email. Thank you, Ms. Arra.
So gentlemen, just to confirm, the wristband can be exchanged for a free alcoholic drink, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And just to, this is sent out to all the attendees and this is the actual website.
Yes.
Okay, and then I believe we received both of those documents.
Yeah.
Okay, and thank you for doing that, we appreciate it.
My motion will be to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-eight-nine-dash-zero-one through three-dash-zero-zero-zero-eight-nine-dash-zero-three.
Second.
I moved in second to approve agenda item number two. I also vote I motion is carried, applications are approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Agenda item number three, application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-nine from Park Event Services LLC, DBA Park Events Services.
And Manuel Zibakala, representing all participants. And also Speaker for the State Park. He is one of the people in charge over at... And by the way, I have my happy birthday. Somebody was going to say it at some point in time, so forget it, get it out of the way.
Thank you. I'm Beyonce years old. All right. Commissioners, any questions?
Either running the same security plans and same plans as your normal events that you've done with like this, correct?
Yes, this is our normal private party for twenty-two people in the sense of our, we provide security, we do ID checks. There's bathrooms indoors and a wristband, everybody that's over twenty-one.
We've had no prior issues with any of the prior events, correct?
Okay, my motion will be to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-nine.
Second.
I moved in second to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-nine. I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Preliminary hearing, calling agenda item number four, application number two-two-dash-two-four-six-one-one from Seven-Eleven Hawaii.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Commissioner, Mr. Murphy, appearing for the applicant, to my right is Blake Jopataki, YOKEOKIKE, he's a director of community resources. We have just one change to investigative report, and that would be on page one. Just clarification on the corporate structure, Seven-Eleven Hawaii Inc. is the applicant. Is solely owned by Seven-Eleven Japan Company Limited, which is ultimately owned by Seven and I Holdings, which is a publicly traded. We have no other changes besides that.
The former club, Kobo Mai.
Yes.
My motion will be to approve application number two-two-dash-two-four-six-one-one.
I moved in second to approve application number two-two-dash-two-four-six-one-one. I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you. Requests, calling agenda item number five, request number two-zero-dash-two-one-four-five-six from DSM Food and Spirits, DBA Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill. Oh, thank you. Mr. Who again?
Not only that, Smokeups. To my right, it's Mr. Mr. Principal of the licensee, I am Kenneth, appearing for the licensing. This is a request to reconsider conditions that were placed on the operating hours of this license. The license was a Spencer General standard, standard category one. It was changed in, by approval of this Commission in February of twenty-twenty to a category three, live music. But there were some concerns from some of the neighbors. So there were restrictions on the operating hours, in particular, the operating hours on the weekdays to go from ten AM to eleven PM. And the licensee agreed to it because he thought this would be the way to get it done, and he could show to the Commission that it would operate in a competent manner. The operating hours were subject to two, three-month probationary periods, which came and went without even. And now the applicant or the licensee, you know, he made further changes to the license premises, just to make sure we've got no noise, no noise issues. If someone would testify, well, we have a history of the violation or complete history, and there are none after February or March of twenty-twenty. We have Mr. Mar Tenet put indoors, but the issue, or the neighbors thought that noise was coming out from the front of the bar, or I call it the bar. And that is the front that fronts University Avenue. So now we have doors that completely block it off. And we have, we copy some of them so that the Commission can see.
This is what it used to look like, the whole place looked like this. It was Mamma Mia days and varsity and tropics and then us. And what we did was, there's one lady behind us that was mainly the one that complained, or said that she could hear the noise. She said it was coming out and then bouncing off the buildings in the front and then coming up to her penthouse apartment. You know, she was the only one that said that, but she said it so many times, you know. So what we did was, we put, the whole place looks like that now, where you act, walk off the patio with the doors. And then it's over, I have another place called Betty's Burgers right next to it, and it's real popular with the kids. And there, that's from nine or ten, but we don't have any alcohol. So they, I think, extended the hours to ten because they don't even go out till nine o'clock. That was closed at nine. But that's the other side of it, it's not painted like the doors, but this is, this is the other side on the corner. And so the whole thing is blocked off now. And, and then I also, what I did was, there was a stage that was in the back before, between the stage and then the wall and then the apartments, or the parking lot and the apartments. And I moved the stage up front and inspectors, I don't remember who it was, but there was a couple inspectors that came at one point and they were at King and University and said that they could hear it on the corner. That was before this all happened, that was two years ago. And so, fair enough, it depended on who the band was, it depended on who the DJ was, it depended on who was playing. That was Brother Nolan played there, you couldn't hear anything. But when we had a rock band or whatever, you could hear it. So now you can't, because it goes to, the noise goes out towards the park, that street doesn't go back into the parking lot. Basically, because the stage is on the corner of Diamond Head and the university side. And so we haven't had any problems, not having any secure tasks, I have them go in the parking lot when we have music now, and they haven't, they don't hear anything.
You know, I think the main complaint was that the noise was coming out from the front of the premises on to University Avenue. The installation of these doors, all the noises contained.
And what I did was, before I picked up the license, I had music. I played music, because I didn't want to go back into the same thing I was in before. We built this thing and then we had music and, because before I decided to, because I'm real happy doing burgers. And before I did this, I said, I want to make sure that I don't have to keep coming here and defending the music, because I'm usually in bed by ten o'clock. So, you know, I didn't want to do that, continue to do that. And, but it hasn't been a problem whatsoever. And this is, we picked up the license May second to read, to do it again, but it's not just an entertainment place anyway. The kids come at ten o'clock at night after they study and everything. And really, the way they are, they can only have a beer or something to eat or whatever for one hour. And then we got to close.
Yeah, and there are a number of establishments right across the street that are open to two.
The place right across that has music across, you guys are good guys.
As I recall, gentlemen, that our issue was that you were operating outside of class or category. Once that was, once that was changed and remedied, then that, that's the Commission's basically blessing to operate under. Correct, so what, what kind of hours are you requesting?
Well, I want to stay, I want to stay up until one, I mean, during the week, Sunday through Thursday. I don't need to be open till two, because I've usually gone by twelve or one. And, but on the weekends, we don't, we don't want to continue the way it was, open till two. But I'd like to...
Folks are currently open on the weekends until two.
Yeah, yeah, so I'd like to stay up until one and give last call at twelve-thirty, because we don't want to be at two o'clock necessarily during the Sunday, Thursday. But that gives the kids time to unwind and be there until twelve or one. And like I said, I didn't really realize it, because I forgot about when I went to college, but I realized that they don't even come out till nine or ten.
Because he didn't study.
I knew you were going to say that, actually. That's true, though.
But you are right, there are other establishments that are open later than that. In law school, we used to go to Sushi King, because they were openly, so we get out of that, they, Law Library at eleven, and then head down the Air Force Sushi. All right, Commissioners, what would you like to do?
Could we get, I just need some clarification, gentlemen, what are the hours that you're proposing that we reconsider?
Weekdays would be from ten AM to one AM. Currently, it is to only eleven PM on weekdays. On weekends, it would begin with the same, no change to hours, which allows us to open to two AM.
The current hours now.
That's correct. So we're just asking an extension on the weekday out.
When you say weekday, what are you considering weekday, because you said Sunday to Thursday. So weekdays would be Sunday through Thursday until one AM?
Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night.
So Saturday, Friday and Saturday nights.
So I wasn't part of the previous hearings or things like that. So, other questions based off the pictures that you've provided? So the front entrance going into the establishment that's next to the burger place, it's closed doors or it's still got a little bit of a roll-down gate?
Right now, it's a roll-down door, because it just, it makes sense, more sense operationally, but the stage is at the other end.
Right, closer to you facing the other way.
Yeah, so you can't, it doesn't come out that door, but if it did, I was prepared to put doors in there too. But it just didn't make sense, it's a really huge area.
Oh, let me just say this, I, you know, because I'm old enough, since it is my birthday, I'm old enough to remember when it was Mago's. Okay, it would get hot in there and the cooks would open the back door.
Oh, we don't allow that, because...
Just make sure don't get too hot, because the cooks will do anything for some fresh air.
Two back doors, and if they do open those two doors, which, you're right, it was a problem, because they sneak out and go smoke.
Yes, and then the sound goes out that back door where those neighbors are.
I think that's what was happening before, because if you go out there when you're playing music, it doesn't matter if you're just going to smoke, it matters if the music's going out there.
Yes.
And so we keep those locked, and we, we're going to put a panic bar on, we don't have one right now. Legally, I got, I can't keep them locked, but that was a problem, because like you said, it wasn't necessarily just for the heat, it was because they were going to smoke. That's what they were doing. Yeah, yeah. And I have a camera right on them now, so I know what they're doing.
I'll show my age, I remember when it was Mago's, it was loud, so. It wasn't in the back, it was more in the front, because we were out of the front end more than we were in the back. I haven't, I don't have any other questions.
Commissioners, I'm inclined to approve the request, but subject to one year probation period, so we can monitor, would that be acceptable?
One year probation.
So, you know, I say so moved, you wanted to make a motion.
Motion to approve the request to allow the, or the request for reconsideration to allow the licensee to remain open for business and serve alcohol until one AM from Sunday through Thursday and two AM on Fridays and Saturdays for one year probation period.
Second.
I moved in second to approve the request with a probationary period in Commissioner Miyashiro's motion. I also vote I motion is carried, request is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item number six, request number two-three-dash-zero-zero-three-zero-two from Yum Cha Hawaii DBA Salt and Pepper Cafe.
With respect to agenda item number six, we received email communication from the former licensee, indicating that they have decided not to renew after all. So no issue, no action required by the Commission.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Arra. No action is required. Moving on to agenda item number seven, request number two-three-dash-zero-zero-three-one-eight from Green Chateau Inc., DBA Pure Hawaii Gentlemen's Club slash Coyote Nights. I think you're on me. Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, James Tennant.
We can barely hear you, see if you can turn on your computer speaker. We can barely hear you. See if you can turn on your computer speaker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, James Tenet on behalf of the licensee.
The request to renew your license after the deadline, correct? The issue with the with your.
Is that better? Good afternoon.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us, Mr. Tenet?
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Tenet.
We were just waiting on the, yes, we were just waiting on the tax clearance and we got it, all of it turned in. Yes, I can. We have everything turned in.
I guess my question is, it states in here that the license is in safekeeping, so you want to renew it. Um, right, but you're gonna be taking it out of safekeeping or remain keeping it in safekeeping?
Yeah, maybe turn off your video and just go audio, Mr. Tenet, you're frozen.
The other option is we.
We will keep it in safekeeping and we just needed to turn in the tax clearance, which has been done.
Um, would you be um, would you?
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
We can hear you, we can hear you, sir. Go ahead, Ms. Allright.
I was just gonna say, um, if if these technical difficulties can uh continue, our suggestion is that we simply. Reschedule this matter uh for next week and ask uh.
Yes, I could hear you also. Sorry about that.
I mean, uh, we we could simply reschedule him for a time when he can come in in person because this is actually a little bit difficult. I'm. Concerned about the quality of the record we're making right now.
I agree.
Yeah, let's do that and for the.
Yes, I can hear you.
Applicants in the gallery and on Zoom. We we want to make sure that we can create a record, but it's also for the courtesy of everyone else. If we can't hear. Someone, you know, we're coming out of COVID. I think the inclination now is to have everyone create a person to the extent possible. So we would appreciate if you folks plan accordingly. With that, why don't we um motion to continue this agenda item to the next available hearing date?
Then move then second is to continue agenda item seven to the next available hearing date. Um, and uh, request that the um licensee appear in person, please.
You will know that.
I also vote I motion is carried, continued. Moving on, Mr. Tenet, please um uh call the office or um email if you need to have some clarification. Moving on to agenda item number eight, request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, five from Bloomingdale's Inc., DVA Forty Carrots Restaurant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission Member, as Kenneth do appearing for the licensee. This is the request to renew after the deadline. The problem with the failure to renew was because. Bloomingdale's is just, it's part of a chain, has many restaurants across the United States. And they went through conversions, converting from LLCs to. Uh, I'm sorry, from corporations to LLCs, their holding company also changed from a. Ink to a LLC. We have not been able to get. Conversion yet approved by the lic permission. We have made that request. Um, and it's not the commission's fault when you delayed, it's our fault in in delaying that. Uh, and that's the reason why we were not able to renew the license. So we would like now to be able to renew it. Um, uh, but we also would. Ask that the commission consider allowing us that when we renew that we be allowed to use a certificate of good standing. Of the present entity, which is the converted and and the reason for that is we got the same FEI. And we have a letter from the IRS confirming that. So with that, we wouldn't be able to renew.
If I could just.
Yes, please.
With respect to uh certain of the, this particular requirement, which is certificate of good standing, this is a requirement that was imposed by rule. So therefore, the commission does have the ability to uh waive the rule in whole or in part.
Um, would we need to uh. Agendize that separately or can that be included in part of this request? Because this is a request to renew after the deadline. We add in and also to allow the certificate of good standing.
I'm gonna, I'll I'll say something in the record, Corp Counsel can chime in if they if they prefer to have it handled. Is that if the commission's uh inclination is to grant the request to renew late. The, so the uh approval would be to renew late uh and use the the documents for the. The current entity because um the 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 late notification of the conversion. Which is a single hearing before the commission is uh in process now. So you would just fold it into the approval language. Like a condition or I guess. Now, if if Corp Counsel wants to think about it or uh has a potential, what we would just do is we'd roll this to next week. And schedule a a separately agenda request to use the uh exist in, I mean. And the reason why I'm suggesting this is because the tax ID number did not change.
I think we are prepared to approve the request as agendized, but I'm not sure if we. Need a separate agenda item or separate request, I should say, um, for what Mr. Ho is asking.
I'm not liquor lawyer advisor, I'm a commissioner, thank you.
Here, Mr. Ho.
Continue to get on the.
What we'll, what we'll do then is on next week's agenda is simply revise the request.
That would um make me more comfortable because I don't like to um make uh take action on anything that's not agendized.
But the renewal request is granted, would be granted.
I believe we can take action in that.
Um, actually, what I, what I intend is uh. You with no objection is that this matter will be continued to next week, uh where it would be a two-part. A two-part request, one would be to renew late and to to the ability to renew using. Uh, the certificate of good standing for the converted entity. I don't want to say new entity because it actually isn't truly. A new entity, it's a converted entity.
Okay, alright.
I understand.
Alright, uh, do we need a motion to continue?
Yes.
Just make the motion to continue item number, right, request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, two, five to next week's meeting or. One week, sorry, second.
Then moved and seconded to continue uh the request for one week. I also vote I motion is carried. Next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and please, of course, work with this, all right, to revise the request. Uh, calling agenda item number nine, request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, three, two from nine, three, zero Associates Inc. D V H Coast Tavern. Hi, good afternoon. So I'm requesting a new renewal late. Can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, my name is Leilani Young, last name Young, Y O U N G.
Alright, um, and what has been the issue is it was also a tax clearance?
But everything's cleared up. I have all paperwork ready to turn in.
Okay, terrific, Commissioners.
The motion will be to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, three, three, two.
Then move then seconded to approve the request. I also vote I motion is carried, request is granted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to other business, calling agenda item number 10. Liquor Commission's review, six-month review of operations for Chapsol Esports Bar and Restaurant, Mr. Kuchi.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Kuchi for the licensee. And it says at the present time, the licensee would not meet the 30% requirement. One of the reasons we looked at the six-month review was because. I wanted to see if we got the catering contract back for what you took for him that is not open. However. Talked to my client today, they're making. They've changed personnel, made substantial changes. So he's asked me to request that the commission uh look at sales from. August through November and evaluate this in December to see whether to meet the 30%. He's asked to do that primarily because even if he doesn't have the catering contract, which is why he wanted to keep the restaurant class. He wants to keep the restaurant class and to do that, he's gotta make some substantial changes with the menu, which he's done. So. I would ask that the commission review this again in December uh off of August through November sales and we can give. It's raised the August through September, yeah, November.
What the kind of substantial changes your client is proposing, Mr.?
He rigid the entire menu. He brought in a chef whose expertise apparently is in doing different types of hamburgers. And is on us very popular in social media, so he's hoping that moves the needle. But I don't want to do it for a longer period of time than that. If you even want to do it like a sliver from like August through October, I'm okay with that. You know, the problem is that they've tried to redo it before in all candor and it hasn't worked, so. This is a, when I talked to my client this morning, this is substantial change for the redoing the whole.
And what Mr. Allright, normally we would not take action on this.
Um, yeah, typically, this is a just report to the commission, but I would note for the record that you didn't. Get the other part of the report, which is the audit supervisor is sitting there. And perhaps uh she might confirm or uh or revise the statement that Mr. Kuchi has made.
Can we have, um, is it Ms. Reyes?
Yeah, she's right there, yeah.
I'm so sorry, I was making on my computer. If you could um comment or provide any any additional information that based on Mr. Kuchi's representation, please.
Aki Correia is audit supervisor. Um, just a brief background of this violation. The licensee was um received this uh license back in 2016. Since then, they have never made a few sales. Except to my year, FY20. Three times, FY17, we issued warning, FY19 and FY21, N O B. And although um I was not provided a six month. From February to uh July 2020. However, the recent uh recently submitted FY22 report. Name the full sales percentage below 30% at 12 points.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I've been here a long time. I um was here actually when we approved this.
I I understand.
And it was our same question from the beginning because, you know, I'm familiar with Chaps Sports Bar. It's a sports bar.
Right.
With the keyword being bar, Mr. Kuchi.
I understand.
And also I have rarely seen your client here. They send you out here to come catch all of our arrows. So, you know, I I I don't know how I feel about um continuing on this route that we've been on.
I I understand that and and the only way they made it for a long time was the catering contract. I understand that, um. You know, I'm, you know, my client asked me to make the requests. I understand what they're trying to do.
Well, even with the catering, as Ms. Reyes said, they only made the 30% one year.
Yeah.
In the entire time they've been in operation. So they have it. Even with the catering, Mr. Kuchi.
I understand.
So, um.
I I want to make sure I heard the number right, 12.8%? Okay, sorry.
Well, no.
No, it's that's that's what it is.
You're trying to calculate, you're looking at like. Not even, you're not even halfway there. No, I just.
No, no, they would, they would have to get me, they would have to, you know, I've owned restaurants. So I understand what they would have to do. That would have to be a huge paradigm shift, but I'm making the request and I understand, I understand what. The concerns are, um. You know, frankly, the advantage to having that license was the catering. It really wasn't anything else, so. You know, if at some point, you know, the aquarium comes back, you know, we'll take the action we need to take, but. Yeah, I understand what the numbers.
And I also don't feel confident with, you know, this whole shift to cheeseburgers. I mean, Chubby's just opened their big brick and mortar right. Near here, in the same parking lot, basically. And they also are licensed and I don't think Burger Guy is gonna be able to compete with them. Plus, I don't, I would like to see a menu. How much you're gonna charge for these burgers because, like I said, I don't want to keep going down this same route, Mr. Kuchi.
No, I understand.
Questions that. Inclined to um. That you don't session or to just um speak about our options with this license.
So if if I may, your option would be to basically convert this to. From a restaurant to dispenser general, which I'm doing with Blue Tropics. And set a date certain. The reason why I would ask for a date certain is because you're gonna have to get. All of the servers to get uh server cards now, which are not required in the restaurant class, which is the. The the two main differences are server cards and the key, so.
If I could put something, if this is something that commission is gonna take under consideration, um, I'd like to say that. With respect to uh reclassification. It it can be done, conducted in an adjudication proceeding. This matter is already subject to an adopted decision order. My feeling is that if that is something the commission went uh wishes to consider. Uh, Mr. Kuchi would need to uh request to amend the adopted DNO to include that specific remedy. It is put back on the agenda and then the commission take it up again and redo the penalty because. Uh, whatever monetary penalty has already been paid, this uh with uh with respect to this six-month review of operations. Is subject to a adopted decision in order that's been. It's already done.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So it can't be done today, in other words.
Right, right. And we weren't, we're not required to take action on this. This is the review. Um, okay, so, Mr. Kuchi. I think we're gonna move down that route. Adjudicating this.
I understand.
We can change it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just need to set another date and then basically that would be.
I think you need to request reconsideration of the the decision or as adopted. Replace that on the agenda, go through the little uh make a record with respect to. Uh, how the uh decision in order needs to be amended and the reasons why, and the commission takes action on that. And then we can go.
Okay. Yeah, and you know, what they'll do is, you know, whenever that's scheduled, that's scheduled and if it drastically changes, then I can bring it to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Great, Commissioners, can I get a type of action for the adoption of decision in order?
Or. Decision in order for. Eleven through.
Then we'll. For the adoption of decision in order for them that items 11 through 19 inclusive. I also vote I. Uh, the adoption of decision in order is approved. Moving into adjudication.
Good afternoon, Thomas Knapp, your Deputy Corporation Counsel on behalf of the city and county of Honolulu.
Calling agenda item twenty Aloha Island Mark. Mr. Banks.
Oh, great, I'm on mute. Madam Chair, members of the commission, David Banks appearing on behalf of Aloha Petroleum. Uh, I have with me, uh, Mr. Timothy Lum. He's the Vice President of Aloha Petroleum. And the primary decision maker for this liquor licensee.
You want, Mr. Banks, do you want, um, Mr. Knapp to read the chart?
No, I I hear uh by wave uh. No, I, I hear by wave reading of the charge. And Aloha Petroleum would like to plead guilty to the charge and with a explanation.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
The move in second is to accept the plea for agenda item twenty. I also vote I, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Knapp, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on August second, two thousand twenty-one, when licensee failed to obtain commission approval for a stock transfer. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Banks, go ahead.
Yes, by way of explanation, I provided the Honolulu Liquor Commission a letter on October twenty-four, twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, explaining what had happened. Aloha Petroleum is a four tiered down wholly owned subsidiary. And at one of the levels, the ultimate ownership did not change. Sunoco L P, which is the publicly traded Delaware company, is still the ultimate parent. So there's no change in that regard, but one of the intermediate, actually the direct shareholder, Sunoco Property Company LLC, transferred its interest to a sister company. And at the headquarters level anyway, there, there wasn't understanding that this needed to be submitted to the Honolulu Liquor Commission for a notification and approval. And that's why it was delayed. When the local business operations found out about this restructuring internally, recommendation was made to notify the commission and that was done pursuant to my letter on October twenty-fifth.
Knapp, do you have any comments?
I know.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty.
Second.
The move in second is to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty. I also vote I, motion is carried, fine is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item twenty-one, Blue Tropics Foreign Grill, Mr. Kuchi.
Keep Kuchi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission, keep Kuchi, licensee, waive reading the charge and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
The move in second is to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-one. I also vote I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Knapp.
This violation occurred on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, when licensee failed to meet the thirty percent food sales requirement. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars. But that recommended fine also includes the option to have a directive to return in six months to report on the status or the license can be reclassified now. I will also note for the commission that warnings were issued to the licensee on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one and June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, this is a licensee that doesn't think they're gonna meet the thirty percent. So what they would prefer to do is reclassify, set a date certain, so reclassify by September one. They'll give their servers till the end of the month to get the server cards.
Speak to me.
It would be from a restaurant to dispenser general.
September one.
Yes.
What, Mr. Right, can we do both the fine and reclassification or one or the other?
Um, actually, I think you can do both. Statutory prohibition is that you can't impose a monetary penalty and suspend or revoke, but there is nothing that I've seen in the statutes or rules that would prohibit both the monetary and the reclass.
To approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda twenty-one and also to reclassify the licensee from a restaurant to a dispenser general to be effective on September one, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
The move in second is to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars and also to reclassify the license effective September one, two thousand twenty-two. I also vote I, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item twenty-two, Club Blue Star. You're serving another ten later.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, give your, Lord, you need his last, last name, please. Sorry.
Charge please.
Charge one, honor about July first, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee's employee Nikki Morty, whose conduct licensee is strictly accountable for, under rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero one, subsection A, consumed liquor while on duty on the license premises in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero one, subsection B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Charge two, honor about July first, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to make time record entries at the time its employee Kayla Keo Hukukapu reported on duty and again, when the employee went off duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four, subsection A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How do you wish to plead? Let's start with charge one.
On the first one, Nikki, she was.
Before, before you provide any comment, we first need to take a plea and you can provide a comment later.
You can accept the charge, deny the charge, repeat no contest and you have an opportunity to give an explanation.
Well, the first one, I think we should plead not guilty. She was.
Okay, before you give your comment, the woman to your right is the licensee.
Correct.
I want to make sure she knows what her options are. Can I accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead not guilty? And that's for charge one. Sure, we'll give you the opportunity. And how do you wish to plead for charge number two? And to accept the pleas for charges one and two, with the item twenty-two.
Second.
Move in second is to accept the pleas for agenda item twenty-two, charges one and two. I also vote I, the pleas are accepted.
So we're gonna ask the prosecutor to give recommendations. After he does that, we can comment, okay? So, Mr. Knapp, what are your recommendations for charges one and two?
Uh, for charge one with licensee's employee drinking on duty, this is their first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars. For charge two, licensee failed to make time record entries for its employee. This is also a first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
And provide comments for our charge one.
First one, she, she finished her duty working behind a bar. So she went. Husband resigned and she wanted to have a drink before she went home, but she did not punch out. Kayla took over from her. Kayla was behind the bar and she didn't punch in. Kayla relieved Nikki, Nikki finished her work. She went to have a drink before she go home, but she didn't punch out.
It all happened, yes.
Yeah.
They were relieving each other, so it was a turnover.
Not having them punch in, punch out. Nikki was technically. I want you to finish.
Can be approved, the recommended fines of five hundred dollars for charge one and two hundred and fifty dollars for charge two, agenda in twenty-two.
The move in second is to approve the recommended fines of five hundred dollars and two hundred and fifty dollars for charged for agenda item twenty-two for a total of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, in, I'm sorry, any objections? Hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, the fines are approved. Thank you. Hope you have the next one as well. Um, calling agenda item twenty-three, Club Blue Star. Please introduce yourselves again for the record.
Alan, like you. As you can read the charge, please.
Honor about July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have a time card or other adequate record showing in English the month, day, year, and time indicating A M or P M and the legal first name and surname of its employees, Scarlett Yamada and Jerika Tanihiga, when those employees were on duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four, subsection A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How do you wish to plead at this charge? Come later, motion takes up the plea, second.
Move in second is to accept the plea for agenda item twenty-three. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote I, plea is accepted.
So, Mr. Knapp, your recommendation, please.
Again, this violation occurred when licensee failed to have adequate time record entries for two of its employees. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Can you provide any comment or explanation?
Yeah, they have punched in and they were still working, but they didn't have their full name. Just had their first name, Scarlett, another girl, Jerika. Had the last name.
Okay. Expensive lessons to learn, right? I, let's hope you folks comply going forward. My motion is gonna be to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda in twenty-three.
Second.
The move in second is to approve the, uh, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-three. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, the fine is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're in agenda item twenty-four, Duke's Bistro. Yoka.
Appreciate your authorization appearing on behalf of the licensee, Duke's Bistro. We waive reading the charges into a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
The move in second is to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-four. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote I, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Knapp, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, when licensee failed to have a manager in active charge of the premises. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Neeshok, any comment?
Uh, yes, I believe what happened at that time is Mr. Duck Nguyen, who is the president of the company, that's D U C, last, first name, last name, N G U Y E N. They're actually, their manager cards had expired. This was in the middle of COVID and it's something that fell to the cracks and they were kind of, for lack of a better explanation, they just were clueless as to how to renew it. And, um, you know, since then, they have renewed it, so we're, we're in compliance.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda in twenty-four.
Okay.
The move in second is to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-four. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote I, the fine is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, members of the commission.
I'm agenda item twenty-five, eight fifty, Lee Word Bowl.
Commissioners, I'll represent that I spoke with licensee's attorney for both items twenty-five and item twenty-six. Their attorney, James Lee, requested a continuance to the next available hearing.
And item twenty-five to the next available hearing, but then we'll call twenty-six and we can make the same representation. Go ahead, okay.
Calling agenda item twenty-six, eight fifty, Lee Word Bowl, again, Mr. Knapp.
Again, I spoke with attorney James Lee earlier this week. He is requesting a continuance to the next available hearing for item number twenty-six as well.
And then objection.
Objections either.
Thank you, we'll also continue agenda in twenty-six to the next available hearing.
Onto agenda item twenty-seven, Anheuser Busch Sales of Hawaii.
Commissioners, I'll represent that I spoke with attorney Kenneth Hu earlier this week and he requested a two-week continuance for this item. We have no objection.
Thank you, let's continue agenda in twenty-seven for two weeks.
Agenda item twenty-eight, Over Easy LLC.
Hi. Uh, my name is Jennifer Lobindon and to my left is Nicholas Lobindon, owners and members of Over Easy LLC.
Mr. Knapp, can you read the charge, please?
Honor about August fifth, two thousand twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee made physical alterations within its license premises to an extension of the license premises by approximately thirteen hundred and fifty square feet without the prior written approval of the Liquor Commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-three dash sixty-two, subsection A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How would you folks like to plead?
Uh, no contest.
Second.
The move in second is to accept the plea for agenda item twenty-eight. I also vote I, I'm sorry, any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote I, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Knapp, what is your recommendation?
Again, this violation occurred on August fifth, two thousand twenty-one, when licensee made physical alterations to the premises without permission approval. This is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
You folks have any comment or explanation?
We weren't aware of the law and we weren't serving any alcohol or storing any alcohol in that extension area. We are aware of it now, so it won't happen again.
Well, as approving that area, it was extended, it was built out before.
And that's here, do you have license information in terms of the, not just timing, but the square feet of the license premises before this alteration?
Um, I have investigator Sato's report, which I'm currently reviewing. I do not know off the top of my head, however.
Mr. Sato is here. Help us with this one, Mr. Sato.
I think investigator Sako. Um, at the time of the inspection on, on the preliminary inspection, the wall was already taken down from the current license premises.
So the alterations had already either begun or been completed prior to our approval of that extended area.
Correct. It was an entire section of the wall.
Okay, okay, and the wall was a part of the existing license premises.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure, because I do recall approving that area.
So, um.
Already did some alterations to the place that they wanted to extend to before we approved it.
Right, so we knew the law about not keeping any alcohol outside of our already approved area. And we just didn't know that there was a law that we had to ask for permission to extend the area before we.
It's, it's for making physi, any physical alterations to the existing premises, which is why I asked Mr. Sato if that wall that was already knocked out was part of the license premises and he confirmed that it was.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify the circumstances.
Motion to convene into executive session, so let me read the, the, um, motion to convene into executive session to consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues on the matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities.
Second.
The move in second is to convene into executive session for a review of the coverage provided by Commissioner Miyashiro. I also vote I, we're now in executive session.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, we're back on the record, thank you for giving us that time, commissioners.
Yes, Chair, my motion is gonna be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda in twenty.
Second.
The move in second is to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-eight. Any objections or reservations, hearing none, I also vote I, motion is carried, the fine is approved. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item twenty-nine, Paradise Ciders.
Evening, commissions, this Casey Zalheim, LLC member of Paradise Ciders.
Thank you.
Mr. Knapp, can you read the charge, please?
Honor about July twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to conspicuously post and expose to view convenient for inspection its license on the license premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy-one of the Hawaii revised statutes.
So, how do you want to plead?
It's my, it's my understanding that I was not on the premise, it was actually.
Hold up, we first need to take a plea and then you can provide a comment later if you wish.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Um.
Your options are to accept the charge. I guess the chart, sorry. Your options are to accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead not guilty?
Okay.
Oh, he said no content?
No, you said not guilty. The third option is no contest.
Or no contest. But again, we need to take a plea. You can accept the plea, deny the plea, or plead no contest.
Um, I will accept the plea.
Motion to accept, uh, plea.
Second.
Then second is accept the fee for agenda item twenty-nine. Uh, any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Nasser, what is your recommendation?
Again, this violation occurred on July twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, when licensee failed to have its license posted for inspection. This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Okay, Mr. Salheim, you can provide any comment or explanation if you wish.
Um, not that it's really any excuse to violate the law, but July twenty-ninth is my birthday and, uh, I was not on the premise at the time. We did have our, our, um, expired license displayed. I had not had time to go down to the office to pick up our new, uh, license and display it properly. And again, not, not that with all respectfully, uh, we are close to the public. Um, and we are operating under a manufacturer's license. And so we, we don't actually have any public to view the license. It would only be for the intentions of, uh, the liquor commission's guidelines if the, if the investigator, uh, came in. In which you guys, you, the liquor commission already is aware that we hold a valid license. So it, it seems a little redundant to me to find the five hundred dollars, um, for a small oversight like this. And, but that's just my point of view. I understand the rules of the rules and I, I messed up and didn't get the new one up on the wall as, uh, in the required time.
You've had this license?
I, I'm sorry.
How long have you had this license?
Uh, I believe, well, we've renewed every year. Um, I believe twenty seventeen was our first year.
She's going to be to issue a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda twenty-nine.
Second.
They moved them second and so issue a two hundred and fifty dollar fine for agenda item twenty-nine. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I, motion is carried. A two hundred and fifty dollar fine will be imposed. Thank you, Mr. Salheim.
Good night.
Calling agenda item thirty, thumbs up market.
With attorney Wayne Luke earlier this week. He is requesting that this matter be continued till September eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We have no doubt.
And are you going to be in touch with, uh, Mr. Luke going forward on this one?
Uh, either myself or, uh, Daniel Jacob.
We'll continue this to September twenty-twenty-two, but could you please make sure Mr. Luke brings his client present, both of them at the hearing? Couldn't say make sure, but please ask, tell him that the commission wants both him and the licensee to be present physically here in the hearing.
Sure, I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
So, uh, agenda item thirty has been continued to September eighth. Calling agenda item thirty-one, Club Hot Ash.
Good afternoon, members, commission key, YouTube, the licensee. We're gonna waiving of the charge to deny both charges of one witness here. Uh, my understanding, Mr. Nasser, he's not going to present a witness, but we stipulated reports.
And you're ready to proceed with the contestant here, Mr. K?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Nasser, are you ready to proceed?
I am.
Okay, um.
But it's also my understanding that he's going to dismiss charge once we're only proceeding on charge.
Okay, why don't we take that up first, um, Mr. Nasser? Um, what's your pleasure as to try to one?
Uh, sure. So at this time, we request that the, uh, charge one be dropped. This was approved by supervising attorney Calico Warrington, um, and the commission administration was notified.
And for the record, it's your professional judgment that you cannot, um, meet the burden of proof to sustain this charge?
That's correct. Um, the witness that we needed would be unavailable for this hearing, uh, and we were unsure if we would be able to get him in the future.
You requesting, uh, like, uh.
We're requesting that charge one be dropped. Yes.
Why don't I make motion to approve the request to charge one with agenda thirty-one?
Second.
They moved that second is to approve the request to withdraw, uh, part one for agenda item thirty-one. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I, charge one is withdrawn.
And so we'll proceed with the contested hearing on charge two for this agenda item. And, um, Mr. K already represented, you'll be calling one witness?
Yes.
And Mr. Nasser, how many witnesses will you be calling?
We will not have witnesses.
Any matters in terms of, um, stipulations to exhibits that?
I've stipulated through the investigative reports, which should have been uploaded. I took a look in your upload.
We have them here. Thank you.
Yeah.
And for the record, what are those exhibits, Mr. Nasser?
That is documents paid stamp P zero-one through P zero-seventeen, which is, uh, the investigative report authored by, uh, former investigator Arthur Tupola.
Yeah. Number associated.
That's exhibit one for the city.
Any other exhibits?
No, no further exhibits.
Mr. K, any exhibits?
No.
By stipulation, we will, the commission will accept it. Prosecutions is a bit more than evidence. Um, so go over the procedural rules. I know you folks both have heard this, but let me go through it again. Both parties have the opportunity to make an opening statement with the city going first. The city has the opportunity to present evidence in support of its case, followed by the licensee. During another presentation, the commissioners also have the opportunity to ask questions. Both parties have the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses and also present rebuttal evidence with the city going first. While in the presentation of the evidence, including rebuttal evidence, both parties will have the opportunity to make final arguments with the city permitted a final argument and rebuttal. Questions, Mr. Nasser? Any questions, Mr. Kuchy?
No.
Okay, we'll begin with opening statements. Go ahead, Mr. Nasser.
Uh, this case involves licensee's failure to prevent employees from instructing commission investigators, uh, inspection on October seventeen, two thousand twenty. As you will see, licensee's employee David Young used a handheld radio to announce the arrival of investigators multiple times, uh, which had an immediate effect on patrons and staff in the bar. Uh, because they permitted the obstruction of commission operations, uh, this licensee violated rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-nine point one uh, of the rules of the liquor commission of the city, uh, and this charge must be sustained.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchy.
Uh, this matter does involve investigators going there on October seventeenth. When that Lee Schultz testified, Mr. Schultz was the doorman that the, Mr. Schultz would testify that, uh, he did radio Dave Young. Dave Young was behind the bar. He's the bartender. Asked Mr. Young whether she should check, uh, the temperature of the investigators coming in, and that was the reason for the radio. Uh, the investigative report's going to have a statement made by Mr. Young, guys, guys, LC is here, LC is here. I'm going to argue that that's not obstruction, hampering, or interfering with the investigation. But that's pretty much what the state of the evidence.
I think, um, um, Mr. Nasser, since you are not calling witnesses, are you resting on exhibit?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, having the commission take into account the report, uh, we have no witnesses to present.
Mr. Kuchy, you want to call your.
Yeah, Lee Schultz.
Are you, uh, you swear at the testimony to give today's chance to the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
And your name is Lee Schultz?
Yeah, last name S C H L T V.
And Mr. Schultz, what is your present employment?
No, head bouncer, I'm not Ash.
And as a head bouncer, were you usually stationed?
The door.
And on October seventeen, two thousand twenty, were you stationed at the door of Club Hot Ash?
Yes.
And what was your job, uh, as the head bouncer?
Check IDs on every, one, every customer for weapons and check the temperature and everybody's saying.
So this was, uh, October seventeen, two thousand twenty, so still in the middle of COVID.
Yeah, we, we weren't, we weren't a strip, but we're a restaurant, so.
You operate as a restaurant?
Right.
So, um, Mr. Schultz, that, you remember the liquor commission investigators coming up to Hot Ash on that day?
Yeah, they came often, they came often during that period, weekly, I think.
Yeah. And, um, did you do anything once they arrived at the door?
Um, well, because they're never busy at that time, we saw them coming, it's like sort of a radio. So they, I think I was easier to check, do you do, do we check their temperatures? Because, you know, they emphasize the checking of the temperature. And Dave said, yeah, check their temperature.
Yeah. So you checked their temperature?
Well, some, some just walked in.
Okay. So, um, other than telling Mr. Young that, asking Mr. Young, uh, if you needed to check your temperature, did you communicate with him on the radio and any other manner?
That was it.
And, uh, and, and like you said, you did check some of the temperature, some of the.
The ones, you know, we, we did on the head rate, so not all of them, I'll check this. There's a bunch of them, eight of them, I think. Customers are alarmed, there's more alarm, big, big guys come in with jackets, if they have anything.
Yeah. I have nothing further.
Mr. Nasser, journey, cross-examination.
Sure, just a few questions. Uh, thanks for being here, Mr. Schultz. Uh, you said that you saw the liquor commission coming, um, and asked if you should check temperatures, correct?
Um, some, 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 some would just, you know, turn on the head and others just walk in fast.
So you saw, how far away were they when you saw them coming?
Ten feet, twenty, or probably maybe, uh, probably a hundred feet total.
Okay, so they had parked there and were walking up to the door?
We're so slow, you see anybody coming in, you know?
And how did you know it was the liquor commission?
Because they have, they have all the cops, you know, they got crew coming in with their black jackets, you know? They all were black jackets. They all, it was covered up, you know? I thought it was HPD at first, but liquor commission.
Okay, and had you seen the investigators before?
No.
And were they, uh, inside of the establishment when you were radioing Mr. Young to ask about whether you should be checking temperatures? Were you ever, uh, instructed or trained to announce the arrival of liquor commission investigators? Do you know, um, whether anything inside of the bar changed after you announced the presence of the liquor commission investigators? When you're at the door, are you able to hear the music inside?
Um, yes, I would, you know.
And after you announced the arrival of commissioners, um, did you hear anybody else go over the radio?
Oh.
Did you hear David Young state that the commission investigators were there?
Oh.
Did you hear the music inside of the club turned down after the announcement of the investigators being?
I don't think the music was even up in your restaurant. I think the music was always at a low. Like our music is up, but I think our music was like, we still have a conversation in the, we're a restaurant.
And just to confirm, you announced the presence of the investigators before they introduced themselves, correct?
Right.
Nothing further.
Mr. K, redirect?
Well, you announced the investigators. I'll need to ask Mr. Young.
Do we check the temperature?
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further.
Any questions for the women?
No questions.
I have a question. So previously you had stated that, um, they were coming like almost weekly.
Right.
As you folks. So every week you'd ask Mr. Young whether or not the temperature needs to be taken for the liquor commission investigators?
They come right at closing time from our back door. So again, I didn't have to go on the radio. We just would open the back door when they were knocking. No.
Is, I guess, you'd ask him every time, make sure that they, you're going to check them or not check them?
When, when we were closing, I didn't, I didn't have to ask them if we were closed, so they were coming after your clothes. They usually come at closing time, not in our back door. I just, we'd open, and they just would come in. It's still with the same numbers, eight, eight guys of all.
Schultz, I thought I heard you say you thought they were crew. Did I hear you correctly?
You heard me correctly.
What is crew?
Crime reduction unit?
That's HPD.
HPD.
Has the crime reduction unit been to your establishment?
You know, you know, I really, I can't tell you if they've been there or not. I mean, at the time when the LC came, I thought part of those guys was crew. I thought it was like HP, I thought it was LC and HP at the same time, just because of their demeanor, you know?
I'm just here hypothetical. If it was, in fact, crew, would you check their temperature, ask somebody whether or not to check their temperature? Excuse this witness, thank you.
Are you?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does the kitchen have the evidence?
No, there are.
And for the record, you rest? For the record, do you rest?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
We're moving to closing arguments, starting with you, Mr. Nasser.
Sure. So as you've heard this evening, at least one of the employees of Club Hot Ash obstructed commission operations by announcing the arrival of investigators. On the document that paid stamped P zero-two, uh, investigator Tupola indicated that hand signals were given to David Young, uh, who then used his radio to announce that the liquor commission was here on two separate occasions that were heard by our investigators. After these announcements went out, uh, it was noted that the volume of the music within the establishment lowered, um, and customers could be heard whispering about the liquor commission being present. Uh, this information is contained on the document, uh, paid stamped P zero-three, uh, which indicates that there was an effect on liquor commission operations that patrons and employees inside of the premises were aware of investigators before they had even entered the premises. And to this day, we don't know whether or not anything was changed, altered, um, or removed before the investigators were able to get inside. Um, because licensee's employees announced the arrival of commission investigators before they were able to conduct such investigation. Uh, their employees interfered with commission operations and it must be found that Club Hot Ash violated rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-nine point one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchy.
Uh, in response to that, the one of the reasons we had Mr. Schultz testify is to basically show what the radio was used. Radio was used only between Mr. Young and Mr. Schultz. Mr. Schultz called Mr. Young. So the idea on Mr. Tupola's report that Mr. Young somehow used the radio as a public address system is not correct. I would argue that unless you can show, unless the prosecution showed that the radio was used as a public address system, that, that would not be the correct inference, um, of the use of the radio, which is why we have Mr. Schultz testify. If Mr. Young, as the report says, that guys, guys, LC is here, LC is here, I would argue, that's not in itself obstruction. That didn't stop the LC from doing anything, doing something. It has to be obstruction, hampering, or interfering with the investigations that are committed. As Mr. Schultz testified, which is the other reason I testified, they had eight people come in and, you know, customers saying the LC is here could very well be because they saw eight people come in. So, uh, I think that's also an incorrect inference. We would ask the commission find the licensing.
Mr. Nasser, anything further?
A few things. One, um, just to clarify, we were not claiming that the radio was a public announcement system. Uh, we were very aware that it was just between employees of the club. However, the employees are the ones, uh, who would make alterations or remove anything, uh, before the investigation. I'll also note that, uh, when this citation was issued on October seventeen, uh, the report only indicates that Arthur Tupola was present. However, this violation stemmed out of an investigation conducted by Honolulu Police on October eleventh for the COVID violation, which was dropped, uh, which is what Mr. Schultz may have been remembering. And that's it.
Great, gentlemen, um, the commission will now deliver.
Thank you.
Now, back on the record. Commissioners.
Sure, my motion is going to be to find the allegations sustained.
Second.
Then move that second to find the allocation sustained for agenda items, agenda item thirty-one, uh, part two. And any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I, motion is carried. Hearing none. I also vote I. Motion is carried.
Mr. Nester, what is your recommendation?
So again, this was obstruction violation that occurred on October 17th, 2020. This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is $1,000.
Thank you. My motion is going to be to issue a fine of $500 for charge to the agenda item 31.
Second.
Then move and second it to issue a $500 fine for agenda item 31, charge two. Any objections or reservations? Hearing none. I also vote I. Motion is carried. A $500 fine will be assessed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ke. Thank you, Mr. Nester. I'm moving on to other business. Calling agenda item 32, Deputy Administrator, Ms. Harae.
I don't have anything in addition to the information that I circulated earlier.
Thank you. All right, seeing that there's no other agenda items, meeting is adjourned.